Or defilement, or impurity. There's never really any good translation and we don't really know exactly what they refer to. What we do know is that Yom Kippur is a particular focus of all of these. And so, as you will see on the first main page of the thing, if you're following it, and on the bit that you can see if you're not following it. The very beginning of the Mishnah covering Yom Kippur, the Mishnah being from around the second century, is all about the notion of impurity. And this is how the Mishnah begins. Seven days before Yom Kippur, they would separate the high priest from his household to the temple apartments, and they appointed another priest as an understudy lest anything should happen to disqualify him. Rabbi Yehuda says, "They even have an understudy wife standing by lest his wife dies, for it is said, and he shall make atonement on his own behalf and on behalf of his household." His household means his wife. But the other sages said to him, "If we went to these lengths, there would be no end to the matter." So, they're not having an understudy wife, but they are having an understudy priest in case anything happens to disqualify him. What sort of thing might disqualify the priest? Again, this is going to be where you get to wave virtual hands or non-virtual hands. What could cause the priest not to be available? Vince or Janet, whoever's hand that is attached to. You will need to agree to being unmuted, I'm afraid. There we go.
Bumping into a corpse.
Bumping into a corpse, exactly. It's an everyday experience for lots of us. That could be a big problem. Bumping into a corpse, which is what we're going to be talking about in a little bit, can make someone impure. Sam, what else have we got?
Lizards. That's another one, isn't it?
Lizards, specifically dead lizards. Yep. Why specifically would there need to be this seven-day period where he's not living with other members of his household? Go on, Sam, you're allowed to say the words if you want, you're a doctor.
Because you, after you purify yourself, you still have to wait seven days before it counts. So if he becomes impure, he doesn't have time to cleanse himself again.
Okay, so that's part of it, is that after being impure from a corpse, it takes seven days to clean yourself up. But there's a specific reason he shouldn't be with his household, meaning his wife.
Sexual intercourse.
Sexual intercourse. We don't want him to be contaminated with any sort of bodily fluids, any of his bodily fluids, or indeed any of her bodily fluids. And so, to be on the safe side, they've got this seven-day self-isolation period with £10,000 fines were he not to comply. And so that's one of the big concerns that there was on Yom Kippur, was about the high priest absolutely having to be pure, because there was only one high priest, and if he was impure, then none of it could happen. Then we also have the other strain of impurity, or rather purity, on Yom Kippur, from a little bit later in the Mishnah. Just as a mikvah purifies the impure, so does the Holy One, ever to be blessed, purify Israel. So, that's where we get our theme of tahara, of purity, around Yom Kippur. What we're going to be looking at, though, is how the rabbis envisaged impurity, and exactly how they saw it. And just to spoil the ending, I'm going to suggest that they saw it in a way that's incredibly similar to dust in Philip Pullman's sense. So we're going to be doing that comparison as we go through. You don't need to completely follow what dust is, because we're going to have a bit of a look at that as well, but just keep this in mind. Now, we've looked at some of the things that can cause impurity, so various sorts of bodily fluids, dead lizards, dead bodies. What are some of the ways that something impure can make something or someone else impure? How are we transmitting our impurity? So Vince very diplomatically said bumped into a corpse. What exactly would you have to do to a corpse in order to become impure from it? Go on, Sam.
Okay.
So touching is one thing that can transmit impurity. What else? Is there any way you can become impure without touching something?
I think specifically with priests and corpses, just by being nearby, isn't it?
So that's anyone, anyone in a corpse, indeed. We're going to come back to corpses, because they're the most powerful source of this strange impurity that's emitted. And certainly by being in the same space as a corpse, it can happen to you. Also, by carrying. So if you're carrying a little bit of corpse in a bag, or more likely if you're a coffin bearer, even if you're not touching the actual corpse, you're going to become impure because you're bearing its weight, and vice versa, being carried by it as well. So if someone who has had sexual intercourse is carrying a nice new saucepan home in a carrier bag, that is also going to become impure from them, because they're carrying it. And there's various other slightly more wacky ones as well. There's one to do with being on a seesaw with someone, yeah, really. But those are kind of the main ones. And then we have corpses. And the corpse has its own special way of transmitting impurity, and that is called ohel. Ohel, meaning tent. And we learn about this from a couple of verses in the Book of Numbers. Just to give my poor rabbinic voice a break, does anyone want semi-rabbinic indeed voice a break? Does anyone want to read out the one that is on screen? If you wave.
We have a substitute rabbi here.
Excellent. Go on, go on, Danit.
Anyone who touches the corpse of any human being is impure for seven days. This is the rule when somebody dies in a tent. Everyone who enters the tent and everyone who is in the tent is impure for seven days. And all the open utensils that are not fastened with a lid are impure. And out in the open, anyone who should touch one who was slain by sword, or who died, or a human bone, or a grave, it shall be unclean for seven days.
Thank you. So, this was a bit of a mystery that the rabbis found themselves with. Because we have a situation where, and this is where I hope that drawing lines on this is going to work, let's have a red line because it's dead. If you've got a tent with a dead body in it and a nice cauldron of stew next to it, the cauldron is impure, because it's in the same tent. But outside, if we've got a corpse lying on the ground with the cauldron next to it, the cauldron is fine. And the rabbis set out to rationalise why that could be. Now, most of us, I think, probably don't have any instinctive difficulty in working out what can be going on there, because when a body dies in a confined space, it's icky. And in a slightly more scientific sense, we're all very well aware, particularly at the moment, that pathogens circulate more easily indoors, and ventilation is really important, and social distancing is less important outdoors. So it kind of makes a lot of sense, as a rule, actually. You might not want to eat anything from a cauldron this close, but my iPad isn't wide enough to show it being further apart. But the rabbis came up with a completely different explanation of what was going on. They decided that the impurity was almost like a physical, almost like a physical thing, like radiation, or a gas, or a particle, or something like that. And they envisaged it rising in an absolutely straight line from the corpse until it hit a ceiling. And when it hits a ceiling, they envisage it spreading along the ceiling, and from there, sort of raining down like nuclear fallout, covering everything in the space. Now, this doesn't feel like the answer that we ourselves would have come up with to that question, but it actually makes a kind of sense, and it works with the data that they're given from the Torah. That's a perfectly legitimate way that they came up with of explaining it. And they also applied the same principle outside. So this corpse outside, impurity is rising off it, up as far as the heavens, as the phrase goes. And this is why you have the difficulty sometimes with aeroplanes flying over cemeteries. El Al will try to avoid flying over a cemetery for exactly that reason, because if you've got your aeroplane here, that's an aeroplane, then the corpse impurity is reaching, thank you, the corpse impurity is reaching all the way up to it. It makes a certain amount of sense, but it also raises some questions, because if we've decided that's how it works, then the rabbis had to decide how it worked in buildings other than a tent. Because a tent is actually a very simple building, it's one space, one story. What if it was a house? So we had four rooms. We had downstairs rooms and upstairs rooms, and let's give ourselves another cauldron there. What's going to happen now? What do we think's going to happen? Again, if you want to speak, you can wave. Go for it, Abby.
Depends on how the bits of the house are separated from each other.
So it might depend on how the house is separated. Abby?
I don't know how to phrase it, but the fumes from the corpse will hit the ceiling.
So we're going to hit the ceiling. Are they going to infect the pot above it?
With this logic, no.
All right. Anyone else? Go on, Michael, David.
It depends on the material.
Depends on the material, interesting. Anyone else? So, and also, let's not forget about this pot to the side as well, that's still there. The rabbis realised, of course, that it depends how the house is constructed, not just its material, but of course, what do you have in houses? You have windows and doors. You don't just have rooms that are completely sealed off from each other, because that would be completely pointless. And so if we assume that there's a hatch or a trapdoor, for example, then it's going to rise all the way through the trapdoor and spread throughout this room. And likewise, if there's a window, they decided that it could head out through the window. But this is where things get complicated, because the rabbis decided they had to have rules on exactly how big a window had to be in order for this impurity to escape through it, and all the other questions that come from that. Now, so far, everything we've said kind of is derived from the Torah. It might not be what we would derive from it, but it's still working in roughly the same way. If we're assuming that it's rising off the body, then we do just have to work out exactly how it's going to work in different sorts of building, because those are questions that arise. The way the rabbis answered those questions, though, are very, very strange, and this is where we're having our dust coming into it. So, here is an example. We've got how the impurity travels through a window. Would someone like to read this one, this top one? Abby, please.
If one makes a new light hole, its size must be at least the size of a large drill hole. If it was eroded by water, or bored by rodents, or eaten away by salt, its size must be at least that of a large person's head, though if he intends to use it, its size need only be that of a square hand breadth. These holes allow impurity to enter and to leave.
Thank you. So, the rabbis are trying to decide what size gap this impurity can leave through. And they say that if you're making a little light hole, like a peep hole in a front door, then it needs to be just the size of the hole that you drill. But if a hole appears there because an animal gnawed it away, or because the wall is rotting away, whatever it would be, that's not enough. Now, what does that mean? That means you can have two identical holes next to each other, each about five centimetres wide, let's say, and one of them is going to let the impurity escape through it, and the other one isn't. Where did that come from? That idea doesn't derive from the Torah text at all, and it makes very little sense, because so far the rabbis were rigidly sticking to viewing it as something kind of like roughly subscribing to laws of physics, maybe not physics, but like it rises until it hits a surface and then it spreads out. And suddenly, it can tell the difference between a hole that was made by a human and a hole that wasn't. And this is the thing that made me immediately think of dust. So now we're going to pause looking at the Mishnah, and we're going to look at Philip Pullman. Go on, Sam.
I'm curious, what kind of salt they've got that it can eat through the wall of your house?
It's a good point. It's possibly more about what type of wall they've got, actually. Like, I think salt does corrode certain types of, like, is it wattle and dawg, like mud-based walls? But I think, I think it does, although you would have to ask someone who's got any sort of skill or talent in that area, to be honest. So, in his Dark Materials by Sir Philip Pullman, which I can strongly recommend to anyone who hasn't read it, although I expect you will have, because you've come to a session about it, we have dust. Dust is an elementary particle that people are beginning to research and become aware of in several different universes. We'll come back to the different universes, maybe. And it has several remarkable properties. One of them is described in this quote. "It was so odd. It didn't make any sense in the way a physicist would expect. He got a piece of ivory, just a lump, and there were no shadows with that," shadows being another term for dust that they're using. "But a carved ivory chest piece did attract the shadows. A big splinter of wood off a plank didn't, but a wooden ruler did. A carved wooden statuette had even more. I'm talking about elementary particles here, for goodness sake. Little minute lumps of scarcely anything, and they knew what these objects were. Anything that was associated with human workmanship and human thought was surrounded by dust. Then he got some fossil skulls from a friend at the museum and tested them to see how far back in time the effect went. There was a cutoff point about 30,000, 40,000 years ago. Before that, no dust. After that, plenty. And that's about the time, apparently, that modern human beings first appeared." So, we had dust, which was strangely attracted to human endeavour, human workmanship, something like that. And then we've got this tumah, this corpse impurity, that is, prefers to leave through exits that have been made by a human being, and that can tell the difference between a human exit and a non-human exit, just like the dust could tell the difference between a lump of ivory and a carved ivory chest piece. What can possibly have been going through the rabbis' minds when they came up with this distinction? It's almost unfathomable, and it certainly doesn't derive from the Torah at all. There's a second point of similarity as well, which is this one with the intentions. Would someone like to read this at the bottom of the page? Please.
A corpse is in a house with many doors. If all of them are locked, all of the doorways are impure. If one of them is open, it purifies all the others. If one intends to remove the corpse through one of the doors, behold, this purifies the others. If a man intended to remove the corpse through the northern door, but then his brothers or relatives came and insisted that he use the southern door, the southern door purifies the northern door, on condition that they are not gaming the system. But if they are gaming the system, behold, both doors are impure.
Thank you. So, this is talking about the situation that I'm sure we've all been in, when you've got a corpse in a building and you're not quite sure how to remove it and how you want to get it out. And again, it starts off in what might be a relatively common sense sort of way. So we have to imagine we've got a house with doors, and then like the roof is hanging over the door slightly, so you've got doorways or porches, or whatever we'd call it. And this is suggesting that because eventually you're going to have to take the corpse out, you're not going to leave it in there forever, any of the potential exit routes are also considered as if it was in them. So if you might take it out through the front door, you might take it out through the back door, we're going to assume that they're both contaminated for the moment. That kind of like works as an idea, possibly. And then it also says that if one of the doors is open, it purifies all the others. And that also actually accords with our understanding of how various different sorts of particle and gas will work. If you've got a building full of some sort of gas that's trying to escape, it will escape under tiny cracks, if it possibly can. But then if you open a big door, it will all wash out of the door and not worry about the tiny cracks anymore. So again, that makes a certain amount of sense. But then we have, if someone intends to remove the corpse through one door, that changes things. And suddenly, the tumah, the impurity, knows what the person intended, and stops going out through all the other doors, and only flows out through the door that they are intending to use. And then, if they change their mind, it suddenly stops flowing out through that door and starts flowing out through the one that they changed their mind to. And this is another one that makes very little sense, because why, why should it be that this thing that they, the rabbis originally envisaged as working in a very physical way, suddenly can engage in mind-reading, and suddenly can work out what you're planning to do? And more than that, it can also tell when you're playing silly games. And so why might someone want to game the system, as the translation says? Need to use all your powers of creativity about why you'd want to avoid a doorway becoming impure now?
Well, and maybe there's something in that doorway that you want to avoid becoming impure.
Yeah, exactly. Something in that doorway, or something coming into that doorway. So you imagine maybe, you know, your Tesco delivery is about to arrive through the back door. You want to make really sure that all the food passing through that space isn't going to be defiled, otherwise you're not going to be able to eat it. And so you might say, "Oh no, actually, I was going to take the, I was going to take the body out of the back door all the time, all the time I was going to do that." And then as soon as the Tesco delivery is in, you might say, "Yeah, no, the front door's better, I'll stick with that." And that, the suggestion is, it doesn't work, you're not going to fool the impurity that way, you're not going to get away with it. And this is also something that we see dust doing in his Dark Materials. So dust, the suggestion is, is responsible for the ability of humans to engage in various sorts of fortune-telling, divination, supernatural communication. So the main character, Lyra, has an alethiometer, which is a device that tells the truth, will answer any question you put into it, and that works by dust. And it can engage in some sort of mind-reading, because it understands what the person is intending to ask it, and it gives them back the answer, and the person has to be in just the right state of mind to do it. It doesn't work if they've got particularly base motives, or if they're in a different frame of mind. And also, I-ching and other forms of divination, the books say, are caused by this dust. So it's also sentient in the sense that it can communicate with people, and it can understand the human mind, and what's going on in the human mind. Now, anyone who has read Philip Pullman, who, what sort of people is dust attracted to? It's not everybody. There are some people in particular who it doesn't like.
Adults, isn't it?
It's adults, it only likes adults. Children, not keen on at all. Now, let's just have a think about these impurities for a moment. Anyone could come across a corpse, but most of the other impurities actually do relate mainly to adults. So the various like sexual-related ones, as for people who are post puberty, and it's puberty that's that cutoff point between childhood and adulthood, that dust is also affected by. There's the sexual ones, there's just the idea of like dealing with death in general, like coffin bearing, dealing with dead bodies is not something that children do, or even did in Mishnaic times. And so we've got this very big cutoff. And this was actually really important to the rabbis, because the high priest had to be free from all impurity when he did the ceremony on Yom Kippur. But to do the Yom Kippur ceremony and to be free from impurity, he had to be free from every sort of impurity that he'd ever come across, because otherwise, if there's still a little bit lingering, he'd still need it. And the most powerful impurity, and the most difficult one to cleanse yourself of, is the corpse impurity that we've been talking about. Does anyone know how the high priest would remove the corpse impurity from himself?
Isn't that the ritual of the Red Hef?
That's exactly it, the ritual of the Red Heifer, the special red cow that, for some reason, and this is such a bizarre thing, that even in the Mishnah, there are rabbis saying, "We don't get this, it makes no sense." And there'd be a particular sort of red cow that was entirely red all over, that would have to be caught and sacrificed in a particular way, and burnt, and its ashes mixed into water, and it was only that water with the Red Heifer's ashes that could cleanse someone of corpse impurity. But there's another wrinkle, and it's that the water could only be prepared by someone who had never been impure, ever. Now, how can you come across someone who's never been impure ever? Because surely everyone has visited a cemetery, or, you know, risked walking over something that's got a deep grave buried in it, particularly in these sorts of times we're talking about, or touched someone who's had a period, or all these different things that they were concerned about. How would you find someone who'd never, ever been impure in any way at all?
Well, new people are being born all the time.
New people are being born all the time, but normally when they're a new person, they're not quite able to sacrifice a cow and mix its ashes into water.
So you have to sequester them, don't you?
You have to suppress them, yeah. Exactly.
Schools of potential purifiers, where you prevent them from coming into contact with any of this stuff, until they're less than thirteen.
Absolutely. And so we're going to see how they got cut off. Andre, please.
I wondered whether it was anything to do with Levi and Cohen being, because they're not allowed in cemeteries, in my limited image of high priests.
Yeah, this is exactly right. And so even today, people who recognise themselves to be Koens or Levis, if they're orthodox, won't go into a cemetery, because they don't want to have this contamination, because strictly speaking, they're not supposed to allow it to happen. There's also tradition that these days, everyone is just kind of assumed to be impure, because there's enough bodies buried around the place that the chances are, we've sort of been in a space with it, but it's still a tradition that they will stick to. If you look on Google, you'll see some excellent photos of Coenim, like sort of white-bearded Jewish men wrapping themselves in plastic on an aeroplane in case it flies over a cemetery. Do not try this at home. And, and kind of it's the equivalent of wrapping themselves in plastic, that they had to do to make sure that they had some people who'd never been impure in order to do this ritual. So, on this page, we have the severed children, and this is where it gets incredibly his dark materials. Would someone like to read this one out? I will read this one out then, because it's a goodie. "There were courtyards in Jerusalem built over solid rock, and beneath them there was a hollow to insulate them from graves in the depths. And they would bring pregnant women who would give birth there and raise their sons there. And when they were seven or eight years old, they would bring oxen with doors strapped to their backs, and the children would sit on their backs and be taken to the spring from which the water for the purification ceremony could be obtained." Now, let's break that down a little bit, and this is something that's being described as happening in sort of pre, just before the destruction of the temple. So this is a relatively genuine historical source from sort of turn of the millennium. First of all, they've got the courtyards with a hollow underneath them. Why have they got a hollow underneath them? It's going back to the thing with the tents and the ceilings that we had before. The hollow space is acting like a sort of extra tent, like they're on the roof of the tent.
They'll be doing a great raid.
Exactly. So if there's a grave underneath the hollow, the impurity from the grave will rise up as far as the top of the hollow, and then it will stop, just like if it was in a tent. And so anyone on top of that is then safe from that. So it's like air-gapping it to make them safe from that sort of impurity. And then these poor women would be brought there to give birth and keep their children locked in that compound until they were seven or eight years old. Why only seven or eight? This is being especially careful that they haven't reached purity yet, it's not purity, puberty yet, so there was no chance of them beginning to experience bodily fluids of a sort that the rabbis wanted to avoid. So they wanted them to be old enough that they were able to do the job they had to, which involves sort of like mixing liquids, and it's probably quite fun, sort of mixing, mixing stuff. But they would have to be young enough that they hadn't experienced any of the bodily events that might depurify them. And then they'd bring oxen with doors strapped to their backs. Why is there a door on the back of the ox? Again, it's creating.
It's a temporary ceiling.
It's a temporary ceiling, exactly. It's creating a sort of moving tent. So if the ox happened to walk over a deep-buried grave, again, the impurity from the grave would rise up as far as the door, and then everything above the door was cut off from it and was completely fine. And then they'd be taken to the spring, and they'd do their business, and then they'd go back to the courtyard until next time they were needed. Now, I am immediately connecting this compound where they kept prepubescent children to cut them off from the harms of the outside world to what we find in his dark materials under the name of Bol Vangar. So, in his dark materials, the church was absolutely terrified of dust, and it felt that it was the source of all evil, it felt that it was the physical manifestation of original sin, church is for you. And they decided that they would try and save new generations of children from having this dust all over them, and they wanted to keep them nice and clean and pure and away from everything evil. And it was described like this. "Darling, these are big, difficult ideas, dust and so on. It's not something for children to worry about, but the doctors do it for the children's own good. Dust is something bad, something wrong, something evil. Grown-ups are infected with dust so deeply that it's too late for them, they can't be helped. But a quick operation on children means they're safe from it. Dust just won't stick to them ever again. They're safe and happy. And there was a precedent. Something like it had happened before. Do you know what the word castration means? It means removing the sexual organs of a boy so that he never develops the characteristics of a man. A castrato keeps his high treble voice all his life, which is why the church allowed it, so useful in church music. Some died from the effects of the operation, but the church wouldn't flinch at the idea of a little cut, you see. There was a precedent. And this would be so much more hygienic than the old methods, when they didn't have anaesthetics or sterile bandages or proper nursing care. It would be gentle by comparison." Now, in his dark materials, they were talking, of course, about cutting the link between a child and their demon, which was a sort of external manifestation of their soul. And they would bring down a special metal blade between the two of them. There was nothing physical there to cut, but that metal blade would separate between them, and henceforth, the child would be free from dust, and this was suggested to be a benefit. And it just strikes me, this is staggeringly similar to the way that the rabbis had such a horror of the idea of tumah, and the fact that adults were all covered in the stuff, and they didn't like it, that they wanted to bring up children, and again, slice them, cut them off in that sort of non-violent way with these doors and the hollow spaces, and completely intercede between them and the source of the impurity, for their own good, or because it's good to be pure. And there is this real vein running through Judaism, that purity, tahara, is a good thing. We sing Eloheinu Shemash and Atavah Bei T'Horah Hei, "God gave me a pure soul. God gave me a pure soul. Purify yourself. God purifies us on Yom Kippur. There's this vein running through that being pure is good. But is it good? Let's think again about what sort of things make a person impure. There's being around a corpse. There's things that arise from sex. There's being around a dead lizard. There are other sorts of dead animals as well. Are these actually necessarily bad things in the grand scheme of things? Well, they're not necessarily pleasant. Being around a corpse, I imagine, is very unpleasant. But that's also kind of life and it's life experience. And that's what it is to be. And sex is not actually a bad thing. And giving birth is not actually a bad thing. And having a period is not actually a bad thing. And we actually find that one of the reasons progressive Jews aren't keen on the system of Tumah is that it treats as impure a lot of very natural bodily functions that we're now completely comfortable with and indeed embrace and celebrate and recognize that they're part of life. And this seems to be the same mistake that the church was making with dust in His Dark Materials. So we have, is the problem with things being out of order? Can't find the page. So dust was described ultimately at the end of His Dark Materials as being a good thing. And the church would never recognize that it was a good thing because it was what made people independent and free thinking and able to formulate their own ideas and something that was to be celebrated and people that should be trying to get it. And it made them not just automatons following authority. Again, we can see why a tyrannical church would like that. And so it became a real quest to try and save dust and acquire dust and make it an important part of life. And I wonder if there is in fact something of that in the Tumah as well. It's clearly something that the rabbis envisaged, not just as being a physical construct, but as being highly intelligent. It was attracted to things that human beings has done. It liked the idea that humans have the intelligence to not just put up a wall, but to knock a hole in it so that two different humans could converse through that wall. It liked the idea that people would take decisions about how to dispose of their dead. They weren't just going to leave a body in a building, but they were going to decide what they were going to do with it to treat it respectfully. And the dust would follow that route and accompany the corpse. The Tumah, sorry, would accompany the corpse. I'm wondering if the rabbis made exactly the same mistake that Philip Pullman understood the church is making and actually is treating Tumah as something bad when it's in fact something good or at least positive. Something that represents what it is to be a person who's alive. Something that we do cleanse ourselves from, from time to time. But maybe cleanse is not the right translation. That is a very English translation and possibly a very Christian translation. We don't really know what these words mean. It's possible that actually they're not opposites in the sense of good and bad. It's possible that Tumah isn't the bad thing and Tahara isn't the good thing, but they're just different things. And perhaps the most obvious example of this is in relation to a woman who's just given birth, who has a set period of Tumah when she is considered impure for a certain number of days after birth, which varies depending on whether it's a boy or a girl. And it's just really difficult to see how anyone could consider that to be a bad thing, having given birth. Why would you not want to go towards them, congratulate them, touch? Well, at the moment, you shouldn't touch people at all. But in general, why would you not want to do that? And I'm wondering if actually the Torah, which laid down these time scales, was suggesting that it wasn't a bad thing, but rather it was a different status and a special time for a person to be in a status of Tumah. And the rabbis came along and missed the nuances of it and decided to portray it as something to be absolutely avoided to the point that they built these really quite horrible compounds where they would keep children in what must have been fairly unpleasant conditions, just in order to insulate them from it for their own purposes. I think there might be something about that, about how Tumah is actually a celebration of what it is. So I'm going to open it up now for people to share a thought or a disagreement or even an agreement, if you have. Vince, then mum.
I'm thinking about passages in Torah where physical objects are declared unclean, in particular leprous walls. And so I'm, I don't know, and I wonder whether you know, whether the words that you've been using today are then used in Torah to describe the condition of a wall which is not particularly desirable, in which case undesirability has become attached to the words.
So it's a very good point. And it is, it is the same language that's being used. And it's all dealt with in the same section of the Mishnah. But we're saying leprous. And of course, that's not really quite the translation either. It's a very strange disease that doesn't actually seem to be contagious in the way that a disease actually is. And it can afflict people and clothes and houses. And that's it. And it doesn't seem to be contagious between them, although there are elements of quarantine. And there's lots of different commentaries suggesting what that might or might not be caused by. For humans, the assumption is it's caused by wrongdoing, like specifically lashon hara, speaking gossip. It's suggested that you catch this sarahat disease. The walls, there's kind of lots of different ideas of what it's all about. And in fact, it's either Rashy or Rashfam, and I can't remember which. One of the commentators said that the walls, it might be God's way of telling the Israelites who moved into houses that they didn't build in the land of Israel, that there was gold hidden in their walls by the previous occupant. And this suggestion is that actually when the walls went like that, they'd pull the house down because that's what you have to do. And they'd find the gold. And so on that reckoning, we might say it was actually a positive thing. I mean, I'm not sure that stealing gold from people who used to live in houses in Israel that were dispossessed is actually a good thing, but we'll save that for a Yom Ha'atzmaut discussion. But we might say it was a good thing through that prism because we're getting a benefit out of it. But you're right, there is, there is a real mystery over some of the different things that were listed as Tamei. The Weathers.
Yeah. So I've got a question. How do we reconcile the impurity of the corpse? Which leads to all these arcane and difficult questions. How do we reconcile that with the honor in which the Jewish religion holds the memory of the dead? We're about to do a Yisroh service in like an hour or something. We say the kaddish, we have yatzit. So we're honoring the dead and yet a corpse is so impure. I find it a bit difficult to reconcile.
It's a really, it's a really good point. And I think that's partly why I'm suspecting that actually the Tumah might be a status rather than a judgment, so to speak. Or it might be something that a corpse has, but it's not necessarily a bad thing because it just is. And people die and we do honor them when they die. I think it's also fair to say though, that there is a difference between the dead and a corpse. And when we have our Yisroh services, even when we're in shul, we don't actually fill the space with corpses. We're thinking about the memories we have and the blessings. And we're able to do that without physically engaging with the corpse. My guess would actually be that historically, that specifically was a hygiene issue apart from anything. And I know that's the standard guess with anything inexplicable in Torah. But clearly, cooking utensils in a tent with a corpse, probably you shouldn't be eating the food out of them. And so I think that there may well be that element to it. And if you read from this tract, Etoha Lot, that we've been looking at, it does get quite graphic in terms of if you've got a jug of corpse slime, the rule is slightly different to if you've got just like an amputated hand or something. And it does make you realize corpses probably aren't actually that nice. But you're right. I think there's also the point about treating it with honor as well. And it's considered a mitzvah to be on a Hebra Kadasha that will accompany a corpse and prepare it for burial. And all of those people are knowingly and deliberately making themselves impure, impure through doing that. And it's something that we do because it's something that's out of honor. And so I think that really does highlight that tension. Come on, Vince, again. I've just muted you. Unmute yourself again and then.
Your, your mother's question reminded me of funeral societies. There's a long tradition in Europe of funeral societies. And even apart from that, there's a contemporary feeling that tending to the physical needs of the corpse is an honorable thing to do. So that reminds me that, strictly speaking, it's only the Kohanim who have to worry about the corpses. For everybody else, it's possibly not a problem. And, and possibly to try and understand some of the questions you've put to us, we have to think back to the fact that this whole purification lark was particularly focused on the high priest.
So it was and it wasn't. So these days, we don't have to worry about it at all, partly because we assume we're all impure. Historically, it might have been a bigger problem because, for example, if I, as someone who's not a Cohen, was conducting a funeral, which would mean that I'd be impure because I'd be in the same space as the corpse. If I then went home to my allotment and decided to sell the priests some figs that I've been growing, they would also be impure because I'd been touching them. And the priests who bought them would then be eating them and becoming pure. So actually, society is very connected to other bits of society in this time. And so it wasn't completely just a Kohanim thing. The, this is exactly also why the Cohen would have to isolate himself for seven days. So it was to make sure that he was only eating things that had been properly prepared and so on. Again, there's strong COVID echoes going on here, but that's as may be. But in a sense, you're right. And I think there is a strong vein of priestly snootiness running through lots of this as well. And the priests saying, well, it's all right for other people to volunteer with dead bodies, but we can't be doing that, can we? I think that's definitely part of it. And there's a caste system element going on there as well. But at the same time, I think it really does show how everything is interconnected and every aspect of my life can interact with every aspect of someone else's life. Sam, please.
Yeah. So in terms of examining whether Tumah is really a bad thing in any kind of objective sense, you, you, you pose quite a strong argument that, you know, the things that, that cause Tumah, that cause Tumah are not, don't seem like bad things and not themselves. So maybe the Tumah is pretty bad. But I think it might also be helpful to examine what are the effects of Tumah? So we've, we've only really examined one of those, which is that the high priest mustn't have any Tumah, Tumah in order to do Yom Kippur. But what else can't you do? Or what else happens if you're, if you're unclean?
Yeah, it's a really good question. And I think the first thing is important to answer it with is that all the effects are legal effects. Though we're understanding Tumah as being this sort of physical thing, like you either have it or you don't. It's an absolute question of fact. Whereas the things that you can and can't do with it are things that the rules say you can and can't do with it. So for example, Tumah doesn't kill you. It doesn't make you ill. It doesn't have any sort of biological effect. It's entirely legal consequences. And the legal consequences are almost entirely around the priesthood ultimately. They all, they will reverberate back onto the priesthood. And so like, there's really complicated rules about the chain of transmission. So someone who touches a body is then a first level Tumah. And if they touch someone else, that person is a second level and so on. It works its way down. And ultimately, the only people who would really care about this are priests because they need to make sure that they're not going into the Temple Mount, which was a controlled area while they are impure. And that they're not going, they're not eating anything impure as well. And so there's particular rules about the priestly offerings that people would give. They had to make sure were not impure because then a priest would be eating an impure offering, which is forbidden. But again, it's forbidden without any particular suggested consequence. It's forbidden because the rules say it's forbidden rather than because anything bad will happen. Or like, or at least it's described, anything bad will happen. So it is ultimately very much priest related. And that's another reason that no one really deals with this anymore because we don't have a priesthood operating in the same way. Anyone else? I'm aware I haven't been looking at the virtual hands. If anyone wanted to raise a virtual hand, you're also very welcome to. Yes, please.
Yeah. It sounds to me like it almost could be a case of this rule was given that, was it, Tumah is the bad one? Bad. It's not bad, just the purification system you have to go through in order to engage with it is a whole system you have to engage with in order to do that. And rather than engage with that system of purification, they said, we're just not going to touch it at all. Right? So it's not that it's forbidden. It's not this huge thing that it's been built up to over time. It's that they, the people who were looking at the choice of you can either engage with Tumah, right? If you have to touch a dead body, that's fine, but you then have to do X, Y and Z to purify yourself. Or they can just stay away from dead bodies. Right? Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes really good sense. And I think, I think you're right. And I think you're really, you're distinguishing really clearly between like the stigmatization of it and the actual facts of it as well. And so there's people deciding to, for a quiet life because they've got too much to do and don't have time for a trip to the Mikvah, not to do any of these things. And then there's people who over time would gradually make it a point of honor, never to do anything that required it because then they've always lived in that state of purity. You're absolutely right. And I think stigmatization is definitely the wrong religion to use as an example with this. But you know what I mean? I think that's exactly one of the things that's been going on. Yeah. Gabby, did you have a hand up or was that accidental hand?
No, it was, it was a purposeful hand.
It was a purposeful hand, please.
I, the thing I was wondering about was whether it's that whether Tumah is more about some sort of a protected status rather than an impurity exactly? That you might be, I don't know, needing of extra support after you've touched a dead body? Or after you've given birth or any of these other various things? I'm not sure why after you come near a dead lizard, you need extra support. But who knows? Maybe lizards were very scary back then.
Yeah, I think you're, I think you're absolutely right. And I think that's a really, that's a really nice way of putting it as well. It's a, it's a, it's a status, not a status symbol, like we mean a status symbol, but a symbol of status of the way that you are. And it's a sign to other people that they might need to engage with you in a different and supportive way, I think, is a really good way of putting it. And that chimes particularly with the leprosy case. The people who were impure with this strange disfiguring skin disease. And they would go through the ritual. And one of the suggestions is that the purpose of this ritual was not actually because it cured them, because how can splashing bird blood on yourself cure you? But rather because it was a sort of piece of really powerful theatre that made the other Israelites be confident that this person was not ill anymore. And it was actually about finding someone a way back into society after they were viewed as being aberrant. And they'd been isolated and ostracized and, you know, locked into their halls in Manchester Metropolitan University. And then they were being eased out of it in a way that gave people reassurance that this wasn't someone they needed to shun and wasn't someone that should be avoided. And so I think that's absolutely right. And so if we look at the purification rituals less as purification and more as just marking that change of status when someone is out of the woods or now in a better position to be a regular member of society, whatever it might be. I think that's very true. Janet, please. Rabbi Janet.
Suzanne, this is actually just something, an anomaly that's just jumped into my head. And that's about the Hebra Kadasha. Because I was on a Hebra Kadasha in the States. And one of the things is that we were never supposed to tell anybody that we were part of the Hebra Kadasha, right? But that seems to be completely bizarre because then it would seem like what you would want to do is know who everybody on Hebra Kadasha was so that, you know, you would stay away from them if you were a Cohen or whatever. So, you know, so the members of the Hebra Kadasha that nobody knows about are sitting in the synagogue next to the Kohanim, who are all very terrified to go in. And, and I mean, they were, the particulars I'm talking about, to go into the, the graveyards, the cemeteries, they, they just wouldn't do it. They'd stand on the outside. And yet they're sitting next to us all the time.
Yeah, I think that's very true. I have to say, I've never heard of the first rule of Hebra Kadasha is you don't tell anyone about Hebra Kadasha. But it makes its own amount of sense and it's considered an honor. And I think maybe it probably comes from that you don't brag about the honor. Is that the principle behind it?
I think so. But then there's that other side of it that, hmm.
Yeah, it's very true. Although of course, by sitting next to, if you were the person who was impure, by sitting next to someone, you'd only render them a slightly lesser sort of impure. And so you might, they might, they might be less, they might object to that slightly less than if they'd been themselves. But yeah, no, you're absolutely right. There's real tensions and it leads to issues about how people in this priestly caste interact with people outside it. And so there's long sections of the Mishna dealing with if you're, you know, if you've got a cleaning lady who's not as good at following Jewish law as you, do you have to assume that she's gone around touching everything in your house? And it's now impure? This is a really nasty, nasty, snobbish stuff almost going on about not just non-priests, but assuming that everyone who's a non-priest and a non-rabbi is a complete ignoramus who doesn't really know anything and is just like ruining stuff for you. It became a real stigma and a real snobbishness to it. Sam?
So I was just thinking about, about the rule that you don't tell anyone that you're on a Hebra Kadasha. I had also not heard about that rule, but I can think of an alternative rationale for it, which is that because there would potentially be concern about becoming contaminated by contact with people who are on the Hebra Kadasha. In order to prevent people from deliberately avoiding members of the Hebra Kadasha and that, which would then lead to people not being on it. So in order for it to be viable to have a Hebra Kadasha, you then make a rule. You're not allowed to tell anyone if you're on it, which also- to tell anyone if you're on it, which also means that anyone who, like, let's say someone's very concerned about becoming impure, they go around trying, trying to ask everyone whether they're on the chavrat kadesha. In order to, so that they can avoid them. Everyone can completely legitimately give the response, I'm not going to tell you that. Whereas if it's not actually a rule, then of course, what happens is everyone who's not on it says, no, I'm not. And all the people who are on it but won't lie say, well, I can't, I'm not going to respond to that. So instead you make it all that no one responds to that question and and thereby the whole system continues to work.
Yeah, I think, I think that's very possible as well. And certainly you do also find elements of the rabbis trying to build a sort of plausible deniability into the system as well and giving people benefits of doubts in certain cases. So one of the examples in the Mishnah is if you come across a little boy holding a bunch of flowers, standing at the edge of a cemetery and he comes and gives you the flowers, you're allowed to take them, even though we're assuming he picked the lilies in the cemetery because where else are you going to get them from? You didn't actually see him doing it. And so we're just sort of turn a blind eye to it almost. And so that's the sort of system that I think Sam is alluding to there. And I think that could, that could very well be what's happening as well. But again, that's about showing compassion to a little child rather than to ruin adults of a sort whom one might feel more confident looking down on in this certain sense as well.
Well, there's, there's an analogous, a rule for exactly the same purpose that in insurance companies like life insurance companies are not allowed to ask you whether you've had an HIV test. And that's because back when HIV tests first became available, insurance companies started using not just your HIV status, so if you were positive, but whether you'd ever taken a test as a marker of risk on the assumption that, actually quite accurate assumption, that people who have had lots of HIV tests are in fact at higher risk of HIV because that's why they've gone and had lots of tests. And in order to, because this obviously presents a massive problem because it means that it discourages people from getting tested, which is critical for controlling the spread of HIV. So they, it was made law that insurance companies simply aren't allowed to ask you that anymore. You have to tell them if you're HIV positive, because that's been hugely influential on, on, you know, on your state of health. But you, you, not only are they not, are you not obliged to them, you're not allowed to tell them whether you've ever taken a test.
Yeah. And I think that's a really good example of what we might be having. And I think to use, to use that analogy, I'm suggesting that maybe the Torah was more concerned with preventing the spread of HIV and looking after people with HIV. And then it gradually had the layers of stigma built into it because the Torah said having HIV is a bad thing, which of course, it's not a good thing in the sense that it's not a pleasant thing. And people decided that bad in the one sense meant bad in the other sense. And it became allieded. And I think that is probably like very possibly exactly what happened. And it was a very, yes, go on Vince.
This, this may be a red herring to accompany the red heifer, but here goes. I've heard it suggested that when you look at the incidents that give rise to impurity, setting aside the walls, the house stuff for a moment. They're connected with the giving or taking of life. And that the giving of life and the taking of life is the provenance only of God. And it's arrogant of human beings to become involved with such matters. So that when the high priest is about to go into very close communion with God, it would be unwise for him to go in in a state of arrogance, having presumed to be involved with stuff which is really only the provenance of the Almighty.
It's interesting. I think almost all of them are involved with the giving or taking of life. Some of them maybe seem a little couple of steps away. So we've got the walls. We've also got the spittle of someone who's had an unusual emission downstairs, which is kind of quite a long way removed from the giving or taking of life. But you're right. I think there's certainly like life force or life blood is involved in it very quickly from Mum. And then we're going to begin finishing.
Yeah, I just had a question about washing your hands after you've been to a cemetery, Jewish cemetery. I mean, the only one I'm really familiar with is the orthodox one where my parents are buried. But you have to wash, or at least there's hand washing facilities, like a ritual hand washing facility with a jug of water. I'm not sure if it's the same in progressive Jewish cemeteries. But from everything that you've said, it seems a bit surprising, that little splash of water. I mean, it's not even for two minutes with antibacterial soap. It seems a bit surprising that a little splash of water is going to purify you.
I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't. I think we're talking about people who had a very different understanding of public health, like biblically, we're talking a good four, 5,000 years ago when they didn't have antibacterial hand wash and water was this nice, clean, cool thing that however dirty it got could be sort of sieved out and made nice again. I can see how they understood that that would help. And indeed, it probably does help. Like if it's clean water, it's better than, I mean, Sam will probably tell me I'm wrong about this. I'm assuming it's better than doing nothing is literally just water with nothing else. I can see a rationale behind it. But again, there's this also idea of maybe you've been doing something sad in a cemetery and it's nice to do something symbolic for yourself to mark the transition from doing something sad to going back to your daily life. And it's not necessarily saying that you were contaminated in the cemetery because most people who visit a cemetery don't actually come into contact with a corpse at all. Your hands are no dirtier than they would be in John Lewis. But it's just marking that moment of transition, I think, is a big part of it. So we're coming up to four o'clock. I'm going to be really strict because other people need this Zoom channel and I've already got in trouble for that once today. Thank you all so much for joining and delving into this bizarre biblical and post biblical world of corpses intense that I wanted to plunge you into. I hope that I've upset those of you who like Philip Pullman and upset those of you who like Judaism. And I was very pleased to share it all with you. I'm going to pop my email address actually in the chat if anyone wants to contact me at any point for any source sheets or anything like that, you're very welcome to. I know I'm going to be seeing some of you very shortly for the afternoon service. And for everyone else, I wish you well over the rest of the fast. Shana Tova and Gemara Chati Ma Tova.
Thanks.